Hey, we're recording.
You have to hit that button there.
Oh.
Okay, good morning, everyone. This is the regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectment of the Town in the Canadian for Tuesday, September nineteen, two thousand twenty-three. We have a quorum and we. What I'm on our agenda, I didn't know before we'll defer for two weeks because John is still talking to the YMCA. To make some corrections to that draft. Minutes last meeting, any comments or corrections?
None here.
None here.
And will be approved the minutes of the September fifth meeting?
Second.
All in favor, I.
I.
Public comments, are there any public? People? Nobody here. Anyway, if anybody shows up, members of the public are welcome to provide comments up to the Board of Selectmen on the agenda topics, schedule for you enter vote. Comments may be submitted electronically since this is a hybrid meeting. By email to B O S distribution at K N C T dot gov and we'll read them. Before the end of the meeting for. Fire Department purchases, Albie, good morning.
Morning all.
My name.
The fire department would like to request a twenty-five thousand dollars for a blanket account. For occupational med and wellness services to Yale New Haven. Hospital, they're doing our annual physical, so this is a budgeted item. For members annual physical at Yale.
Does this include the volunteers?
Yes, this will be career and volunteer. It's not all the physicals, but it's a bulk of them that that use the department. For the the physical which we're required to do.
It's in the annual budget, right?
Yeah, 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 it's definitely an annual budget.
Good.
The ones who don't use this use some another.
They might use their a person, you know, another health physician, there's requirements that they can use, but they might use something closer to their house. And we'll have just individual in the voices for those.
Gotcha. No change in price, sorry.
Was that?
No, no change in what it was last year.
Well, last year we used a different company that we weren't as happy with services nor. The billing process, so that's why we switched to Yale. But it would have been a blanket for either one of them, but yeah, we switched to Yale this year for better quality.
Now, for the questions, I move we approve this request from the fire department blanket purchase orders for twenty-five thousand dollars for the. Physical exams is described by Chief Bassett, second.
Second.
All in favor, I.
I.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Number five. Chris Kaiser.
We skipping four. We are.
First one. I'll be getting in front of me, my phone's back there now, so like that.
Yeah.
Okay, that's that's the renewal of the light path contract, that's for our WAN internet provider. Voice and data. And it's actually they're doing a great thing for us this go around. They have, we have eliminated. Two very expensive internet routers we use for our redundancy, they've supplied new ones for us, so we don't have to maintain those any longer. They're doubling our internet speed. They're adding threat and monitoring protection to all of our connectivities. And they're actually going to do a true redundancy. Due to the fact that what happened when they cut the fiber a few months back. They're actually going to branch this off. One location of ours will be completely separate with fiber compared to what comes into town hall too, so we'll have true redundancy.
So Light Path is a. Affiliate or subsidiary of Altice Opto.
Right, yeah, I think they dropped the Altice. Month or two ago, you don't see it anymore, just comes back again as light path. But they've been. They've been phenomenal with us.
Does this include?
Their prices too to keep.
Does this include the connection to West School or is that separate?
Separate. That's only down to, I think it's six hundred dollars a month. And when we started twenty years ago, it was twenty-five hundred.
So what is what is the bandish?
Bandage is we're doing, and this is the budget and part of the whole. Cybersecurity plan, if you will. We don't have to put this behind closed doors, it's something that's for us, they're doing a complete assessment of the WAN and they're going to. Remap all of the devices, all the locations that we put on board, give us a whole. Birds eye, birds eye look as to who put what in libraries, new machines, schools, new things, our new things. Last time we did it, it was around twenty-five thousand, so almost seventeen thousand is not a bad price at all for them to come in and show us exactly what's been redesigned.
When's the last time we did?
I looked it up, I think it was close to eight years ago. Yeah, and we've had, we've added so many more buildings and connections, so. And lastly is, I don't even think we need to put it on, but Sal did anyway. That's our annual renewal for virtualization. So we have to pay for support on that, and we get it through CWG because we get the government rate on that.
Any questions?
Nope, none here.
I move we approve the request from IT for the as described by Chris Kaiser for the three items on our agenda. Second.
Second here.
All in favor?
I.
I. Thank you.
Joe, you're up.
Good morning.
Hey.
So about a year ago, the Police Department Building Committee and the Department of Public Works issued a request qualifications for our owners' rep services. We received. Three qualification packages, all three firms were interviewed. Slam was selected by the building committee. At that time. The project was only funded through the pre-construction phase, so Slam's contract was written. With the construction phase as an option. Now the G F P is in place and the project is fully funded. We are proceeding to the construction phase, which is a huge milestone. So at the last building committee meeting, the committee voted unanimously to recommend to the Board of Selectmen. To authorize Slam Construction Services for the construction phase for a value of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. And as I mentioned, the funds are available.
Any questions?
What what's the timing?
For the construction phase, it's still scheduled to start December fourth. At the building.
At the building.
Yep. We'll move out right around Thanksgiving. Move over to thirty-nine Locusts. And then start construction on the fourth of December.
Excellent. I move we approve this request from Public Works and the Police Department for the Slam contract for three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty dollars as described by Joe. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, Tiger.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this first item is for a materials purchase of granite curbing from William Stone, they've been the consistent low bidder. For the past year or more. This is for twelve thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents, I added a contingency of five hundred hours just in case. The linear feet footage comes out a little bit larger or than than ordered, since they they don't cut specific. For a total of thirteen thousand, four sixty-nine eighty-six. This is for portion of it is for the Richmond Hill Road project is an island that is coming out of Meat Park, we're doing out of Granite Curve, the splitter island that exit. And the pieces need to be need to be specifically made for that for that piece, and then the rest of the truck. I filled with straight pieces, so we didn't have to pay for a short load just to bring that type of material to us.
Questions?
No.
So there'll be a splitting.
There's a splitter island there now, yeah, when you're coming out of Meat Park, there's a splitter island, you can, you know, there's, it's very small and with basically two signs in it that say, you know, one way or what have you. We're making a little bit more pronounced and the sidewalk will travel through that portion. So the the splitter island gets a little bit bigger and then we'll armor plate it with granite and the the way the radius works, the radius pieces, they're very specific, they're very tight. So you can't make them out of straight pieces, a lot of times we make the granite, the curves out of straight pieces, you can't cut these to that.
But that's going to make that safer, right?
That's going to make it much safer, yes, and then like I said, the sidewalk that that stops right now at the park will travel through the through the exit and then continue on the sidewalk.
Excellent, excellent.
So this is, this is just to finish that one little piece, the rest of it was all straight pieces that we had in stock.
I move reprove this request from Public Works to enter into contact with F G B Construction for. No.
No. William Stone, F G B is the next one.
William Stone for a total of thirteen thousand, four sixty-nine eighty-six is described by Tiger for the purchase of granite curbing, second.
Second here.
All in favor, I.
I.
Thank you.
Now we have a great.
So this next one is the the long awaited repaving of our roads that were dug up either through ever source gas activities or. Or aquarium water activities. We went out to bid. We solicited bids from four contractors and five contractors and sent it on a. Was advertised publicly. We got four bids back. If you look, you can see the bids are quite tight between one and two between F G B and Grasso. F G B was the low bidder at one million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, five twenty-two fifty. I added a fifteen percent contingency of two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for a total of one million, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. And this is for. All the roads that are in essence from Farm Road. To Church Street. Both sides of the street of South Avenue, so South Avenue, left South Avenue, right, so from Main Street to Park Street. All the way through. It's. Brooks Road, Crystal Street, Elm Place, Gray Street, Hawthorne Road, Kelly Green, Leslie Lane, Meadow Lane, Orchard Lane, Park Place, Selick Place, Whitney Avenue. Woodland Road, Autumn Lane, Douglas Road, Farady Drive, Orchard Drive, Southwood Drive, Tommy's Lane, Green Avenue, Maple Street, Oak Street, Locust Avenue and Grove Street. Gives you everybody.
Who's left off?
Not many, I have to look, and I think there's one portion of Farmer that that's that might be left off that I gotta I gotta look at.
And most of this is being paid for by every source of gas.
Or or being shared by every source and aquarium.
Right.
What about Harrison?
Harrison is on the list already, so we're waiting for, yeah, Harrison is interesting, they 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 had a leak. In the thirty-six inch water line, so when they pressurized it, they had a leak, they couldn't, and it took them, it's taken them about a month, they had to bring in a special company to come in and find it. They found the leak the other day and the last week they found it and they've been working this week on sealing that what they hope is just this one leak. It's very small, it's in weld. But they obviously they've got to meet tests, right, so.
They actually put water through there, is it?
No, they, well, they pressurize it with, yeah, they put water and pressurize it and then they have to train her, yeah. So the thought being is that they'll fix that. And then hopefully they'll pressurize it again. At that point in time, it passes, hopefully there's not another leak further up the hill, because this one's located very close to Main Street. At that point in time, they'll they'll fill it, chlorinate it, and then we can come in and we can pave it. So we're we're waiting, so that's really.
Waiting for the road to settle as well.
That too, we're having a determination whether or not we want to. Thought being is that maybe we want to put a thin shim course over the top of it. Just and let it sit for the winter, that and Littlebrook, because there's been so much work on the on the roads and let them sit and settle. So that it's actually a nice paving, you know, and we're working right now on who would pay for that, whether it would be the town or whether it would be Aquarian. You know, my opinion is that Aquarian should help us go through this because they dug up the road so poorly. You know, so much that they should take over that that idea, because the thought is if we come in and we and we repave it and she settles over the winter. Nobody wins at that point in time, we have to come back out and do it again, so. We're in discussions right now as to as to how to proceed on that.
Any further questions?
Just to clarify, they pay for it, but we get to actually do the work.
Yeah, that's that's similar to this right now, we contract they and they reimburse us for the work, you know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So this is actually not part of the highway, the road.
Well, we have monies in place at present for the contract and then we wait for reimbursement back. You know, the there's certain aspects in here that that we do pay for, we pay for the police protection, we pay for the mobilization, small items like that, but they pay for the milling and the paving. You know, the large items.
Okay, I move we approve this request from Public Works to enter into a contract with F G B Construction for a total of means six thirty-nine. Five twenty-two fifty is described by Tiger for the repaving of a bunch of roads. Paid for mainly by every source. And Aquarian, second.
Okay.
All in favor, I.
I.
Thank you, Tiger.
Put this list on the website as well, so it'll hopefully make everyone.
Long list.
It's a long list, it's a good list.
Oh, sorry, and the timing on that is gonna be.
He's gonna start within the next two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, so he's looking at somewhere on October one. Coming forward, I told him I didn't want to be paving towards the end towards Thanksgiving, so I wanted to be done in October, early November, so that's the goal.
Okay.
This next one is for. Striping of the lines to put back on these roads, that's one of the things that we're responsible for, since it's more of a maintenance item. We went to safety markings for a quote. They have the low bidder of the CROG procurement contract. They've done excellent work for us in the past. So the contract, the quote was for twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, I added a contingency of fifteen percent for forty-two hundred dollars for a total of thirty-two thousand, one ninety-five. And in essence, we're just putting back the stripes that were were on the road, we're not adding a W L here or there, any, but basically. Stripping a road as it was prior.
Any questions? I move approve this request from Public Works to enter into a contract with safety markings for a total of thirty-two thousand, one ninety-five is described by Tiger for the lining of the. Various roads and local roads project number two, second. All in favor?
I. Thank you.
Morning, Bill. First quest here, I have two Playhouse Project H V A system, it's a. Approval of contract connected temperature controls to. Install the building management system. These are common systems that you control the H A C systems, hot water, mist hot water. Pumps, whatever we want to tie into it, we could tie into it. They went out to bid, we received two bids and. C T C came at the little bit.
Any questions?
This is being funded by ARPA, is that right, the whole manager?
Yes, it is. ARPA is has its challenges and when it comes to procurement. So we couldn't go the traditional path through a general contractor on this, I had to actually put it out to a bid and. And meet all their criteria on bidding and what have you. And so we'll just hire these guys directly and they'll work with our contractor.
And then we file for the funds from ARPA.
Yeah, however, oh, and does that quarterly or however it is once the work's done.
Thank you.
No further questions, I move we approve this contract with Connecticut Temperature Controls for a total of two sixty-nine eighty-one. As described by Bill for the. Work involving. Parts and equipment for the H C A C, H B A C.
H A C B M S.
H B A C Management Control System. At the Playhouse, second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, the second request here, again, using the ARPA funds is for the fire sprinkler system. So we went out to bid, we received one bid for this. From Mac Fire Protection, who's done some work for us in the past, they've done great work. They came in. At a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. We sat down with them, went through the plans and were able to value engineer some of the items out that weren't required. And then we think were necessary. And we're able to reduce that down to the hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred. So that's our requests for the, let's say, five, six hundred plus contingency of seventeen, five sixty. For the total request of. One ninety-three, one sixty.
Is this a dry system or?
No, this is going to be a wet system. Tried to avoid a dry system as much as possible because it's more moving parts, to be honest with you, and we feel comfortable, it's been a wet system. For decades. Well, I I could tell you, one of the heads downstairs in the basement, we took off and it's got the old porcelain little head on it, says nineteen thirty-five on it. So we got our monies, where's that that one?
Any questions?
I'm just also to clarify that this also is under ARPA funding, so if you take these two projects, the HVAC and the sprinkler system, does that come into? Into the the amount that we were anticipating?
Yes, yes, so we had a total of six hundred between these two and the elevator, we came in approximately five fifty.
Okay.
So it's.
So there's a little bit of extra there.
Yeah, so as I put a little bit on the continued side, just to, yeah, if we need to go that route, it's it's just been a bit of a challenge with that. With that fun.
Okay, thank you.
I move reprove this request from Public Works for the contract with Mac Fire Protection in the amount of. One ninety-three, one sixty, which includes a contingency for the. Fire sprinkler system at the Playhouse is described by Bill, second.
Second here.
All in favor, I.
I.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah.
Rosine.
Good morning.
And we'll visit to you.
Yes.
Okay. I'm here to request the approval to move six thousand, sixty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents of regular motor vehicle. One thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-two cents of supplemental motor vehicle. And six thousand, nine hundred, sixty-four dollars and seven pennies of personal property for a total of fourteen thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-two cents. To the suspense file, as you know, statutorily, we have to still continue to collect for fifteen years. But we'd like to just take this out of our current books and put them to the aside.
Any questions?
Just, oh, thank you, just remind us, this, we do this every year, is it about the same amount that we put in this?
Ask me that all the time, and this year we're prepared.
Already, okay.
No, we actually have been going down each year, it's been easier, the D M V has new ways to stop registrations. In the state, so as long as people are still in the state, we're able to catch a lot of these delinquencies. And we have a great collection agency, so we only keep certain amount of years. In-house, the rest go to our collection agency, who has other avenues, they can access social security numbers, they can access credit card information. Things that we can't touch so that they can do, so last year was just under twenty-one thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, good, and by these years you have twenty fifteen for motor vehicle and supplemental, does that mean next year we'll probably, you'll clean out twenty sixteen and so forth?
Correct.
Okay, yes. Great, thank you.
I have a question unrelated to this, but it's related to the. So we're two weeks away from the revaluation date on October first. And Sebby tells me we're gonna hit ten billion dollars. Bringing our mill rate back down in the thirteens. What does that do to our personal property tax for cars, because we only have one mill rate, right?
It it's not going to do anything, we're a town where it's under the state limit, so we're always going to be collecting at the amount that the mill rate is in town.
Well, that's my point, you know, if our mill rate goes from eighteen to thirteen, are we, are we going to have a big reduction in our personal property tax next year? It's driven by real estate more than by cars, but. Yeah. First, so first, so we probably will have a.
Right. The the difference is though with the D M V car, with the cars, they haven't depreciated at the rate that they used to. Excuse me, there are actually some of them, some of the older cars are appreciating. Because of the what happened during the pandemic where people couldn't get cars.
Right.
Right, for two years it was appreciating, it always appreciated, now it's starting to come back down. But they should see a reduction.
But the the mill rate is being driven primarily by real estate, but the personal property will be benefit from that. Reduction, actually, they benefit, but it hurts us in our revenues, that's my point.
Well, if all things were equal, you wouldn't, the the value goes up, the mill rate goes down, if all things were equal, so it's it's basically then going to be a product of your budget, what's your budget going to do to that number?
Okay, we're talking to Sebby about this, but. Okay. Then anyway, I move we approve this transfer to the. Suspense. Uncollectible taxes account, the amounts on our tablets to fourteen thousand, four, four, four fourteen, twenty-two for the three years. On our tablets. As described by Row, second.
Second.
All in favor?
I. Thank you.
Thank you.
Contracts under ten, any questions?
Oh, I did have a question. On the contracts under ten, there's just one, and actually just for clarification. Tiger, if you'd be so kind, I I. I was reminded that the survey at Irwin Park for the wetland. Boardwalk and and the terrorist areas, we we've seen this a couple of times, if you just give us an update of where we stand.
Sure, so. Yeah, there's been several iterations, I guess we would call it, so we went out, we did a an initial survey of the area. For the for the boardwalk with a wetland delineation, we were asked to then redefine the wetlands a little bit further. And then the surveyor had to come back out again and pick up that data and some additional data that the the designer Richter and Seegan wanted. So that was the second portion, second time to come out, then this time, they did the design, they've done a preliminary design of the location of the boardwalk. But due to the. To the amount of of vegetation in the area, we couldn't necessarily. Necessarily see topographically what was going on of the ground below it, the surveyors did a really good job of trying to get into the area to see. But the the designer asked us as well as the thought being that we'd go in and cut the. Cut the route. Down, John did a great job, John How did a great job going in and cutting the route down so the survey could come in, stake the center line of it so that inland wetlands, park and rec. And then the constant, you know, other members could see the actual route that it was going to take. So we had to have the surveyor come back out again, stake that center line so they could see where the boardwalk would be, so when we go for approval later, they'd actually be able to see. Where it would be and what it would look like, you know, in the area, so that that was for the for the additional work to do that.
Okay, so we're done, no more surveying.
Be done.
Next is, is that supposed to be in before winter sets in or?
Well, they they'll work through the design, we're gonna, we're gonna, we we still have to go back to park and rec for final approval inland wetlands for wetland. For wetland permit, and then the thought is to come back in in the spring and do that, but. But right now, cutting it, I'm gonna ask in a little while, let's go out and take a look, park and wreck to go out and take a look, and then so they could see it in its while it's been cut, so they can walk through the area like we did. And and see how the see the path that would it would take, other than that, you would you would be looking from the from the flexibait path. Into an area vegetation, you wouldn't necessarily be able to envision what where it would travel and and how it would travel, so I think it was, I think it was a good idea to go in and cut it down.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
None here.
Okay, Tree Warden.
Uh, thank you, this. Bob went out for his latest bid of September sixth, it was eight separate areas, we we typically go out to six, seven bidders on our list, we got three back. Hutchinson Tree at this time was the low bid at ten thousand eighty-five, the bids range from ten thousand eighty-five to fifteen thousand, seven ninety-four from Homestead. Again, it was eight separate locations, some of them are ash trees, some is pruning and some are just removals of of dead trees. Basically all throughout town, so Hutchins has done nice work first in the past and we request the contract be awarded.
Who's gonna remove the tree? In front of Bristol, that's a state right away now that's.
It's a state, right, they cut it down to that level because now it's outside of their realm, so the thought being is that we'll either take it down. To the rainy portion, or the thought is to leave it since it's not necessarily going to fall on anything or anyone, it was more the upper portion of the tree that was in danger. So the sign is still there and then they're working through what to do at that point in time, take the tree down, plant another tree in its place, things of that nature, but.
That's a huge, it's a huge stump.
Huge stump. Got a lot of material left, yeah. It's in essence, it's it should be the state's responsibility to take down to the end, right now they took took care of the hazard.
Right. With their people or they hired a? They hired a contractor to?
They hired out and that one, because it was actually ever source had to work, their their contractor had to do it since it was in the wires as well. So it was really a joint process between ever source, the state and the town, so ever source came in, took down the majority of it, state took, state helped with traffic control. And C B W took a lot of the material, we either brought it to a mill, you know, to have it milled or or disposed of it.
Okay. So we move the Tree Warden's request for ten thousand eighty-five dollars for Hutchins and Tree Care as described by Tiger, second?
Second here.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Good morning, Cheryl.
Okay, I have. Two individuals I'm looking to remove from probation, first is Stephen Payne in the. P and Z office, he has been a team player, we have received tremendous amount of. Kudos to the work he has done with the public and I think we have got a good team down there, so. I strongly recommend we remove Stephen Payne. Next is Jeff Melgano, he is a groundsman too with the Parks Department. He has. Done well with taking direction, he asked to assist others as a team player and I recommend we remove him and I have parks here if anybody has any questions.
Any questions? I move approve this request from numerous resources to remove Stephen Payne and Jeff Melgano from probationary status. Second?
Second.
All favor?
Bye.
Hi, okay.
Mimi's gonna do this one.
Good morning.
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 We are very happy to be presenting this morning Carmella Papalo. For tax collector clerk that is replacing Jenny LaFond who moved over to the police department. We had thirty seven applications and we interviewed seven. Applicants, very, very impressed with all of them. So we've offered this position to Carmella and she has accepted and she will be starting October first. If anybody has any questions.
Any questions?
Nope.
Not here.
This is an important hire.
It is. So we're very happy.
Okay, I move reprove this request from human resources to hire Carmel Carmel. Carmella Papalo. As full-time tax clerk for the Tax Collector's Office. Second?
Second here.
All favor? Thank you. Legal fellows, he's on the tablets. Legal bills. Not legal fees. I'm. Any questions?
No.
I move we approve the legal bills on the tablet. Second?
Second.
All favor? Uh, overpayments of. Taxes. Primarily. Auto vehicle. I move you approve the refunds or tax overpayments. That are on our tablets.
Second here.
All favor? Okay, that ends our. We're gonna go into executive session on two items. One is the. Discussion of security matter. Security strategy matter. And the other is discussion of. Site lease sale or purchase of real estate. Are we coming out?
You wanna have selectmen's comments?
I don't, why is it not here? Selectmen's comments, selectmen's comments are now. Oh, I'm sorry. It was, okay, I jumped down there. I have no comments.
It's easy.
Just to have a, just an update, because we at our last meeting two weeks ago, we were getting close to. The Affordable Housing Committee selections and I I think the first selectman said no more candidates, but we did actually have one and. And so there's all great, I have to say. I I've interviewed everybody who's raised their hand. And I know that my colleagues here have as well. And so very, very. Interested in qualified candidates, so we're lucky to to have that. So just from a timing perspective, just so that everybody is aware in terms of transparency. There are nine open seats. There's no such thing as these are R seats or D seats or U seats. They're all open and that the ordinance does state that no more than five. Individuals can be of any one party. So we're getting close. We've just. The number of questions came up as to the process in which. Four seats are being recommended by the Town Council, the Board of Finance, Planning and Zoning. And the Housing Authority. And we've got all four people that were recommended initially. They're seem all good to me. However, the process perhaps was different for each group. And so just to be consistent. If we've inquired that there's been approval by those town bodies for the individual being. Recommended for representing those town bodies. So that's underway and should be pretty simple over the next few weeks. So we'll be brought back here and hopefully in, what's that, October second is our next meeting. We'll go ahead and approve that.
Likewise, I am heartened by the outpouring of interest, as was the case with the Utilities Commission. We've got the same thing with the AHC. One thing I just want to clarify, Kath, I mean, those four seats that are being recommended. The individuals have to come from that body. I think that's, so just 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 to be clear. And then there are these kind of five open seats, but. Again, it's it's great that we've had the interest we've had, so thank thank everyone for for that.
And we as the Board of Selectmen have to approve all nine, correct?
Okay, any further comes. I move we go into executive session and the only people to stay are. Well, actually, we have the police here, all three police officers. With the chief.
Four.
Superintendent. And then we'll do the first item first with the superintendent. Oh, I'm sorry, Katrina's on by Zoom. Okay. And I, you know, I don't know the. Yeah, Cheryl's gonna stay. And you can stay if you want to. It's not really financial. It is sort of financial. Why don't you say, Anne? And we will, we will come out, we will come out of executive session and not have a vote. I believe so. Someone's gotta run the Zoom. Voting, I vote, I I moved to go into executive sessions as described. Earlier, second, all favor? Okay. Okay.
That sounds worse.
And all the guests.
Okay, it's nine fifty eight. We came out of executive session nine fifty eight. I move we adjourn.
Second here.
Second, all favor?
Thank you.
I did, I did follow up if you asked about Austin, do the due diligence.